Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and I'll ask Madam Clerk for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Go to blue.
Absent Mr. Mills.
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Rose Burchan?
Here.
Mr. Kleindienst?
Here.
If you'll all rise, please, for the flag salute.
If you'll join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Our first order of business on the agenda tonight is a presentation by the American Red Cross. It is a 9/11 presentation. Pam, I think this is yours, huh? Good evening. This is Pam Anderson from American Red Cross. Well, we gotta get your mic. Maybe we can pull that mic in and hit that button on the bottom and then you'll hear yourself.
Hello?
There it is.
There we go. Thank you. Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name's Pam Anderson. I'm the executive for the Riverside County Chapter of the American Red Cross. It's my pleasure to be here this evening and I think most appropriate because it is the eve of the second anniversary of the 9/11 terrorist attacks on our great nation. And I'm here really this evening to publicly recognize and thank one individual in particular. And this person is an elected official and I think from my estimation and all the work that we do across the county has done more for your Red Cross chapter than any other elected official that I've worked with across this county. And this is a big county. And the person that I'm referring to is Mayor Will Kleindienst. He has demonstrated his leadership and support to our chapter and I am here tonight to thank you personally on behalf of everything that you've done. And I wanted to take just a few minutes if I could and just highlight some of those things because I think you'll be impressed. I certainly was. A little over three years ago, my first meeting with Mayor Kleindienst and along with a couple of other community leaders here, we actually went to the mayor to talk certainly about Red Cross local programs and services here in Coachella Valley, but really to seek his endorsement and a grant proposal that we wanted to submit to acquire an emergency response vehicle. And this vehicle is one that we currently have and it's a mobile and site-feeding vehicle that in times of disaster, much like that was used after the terrorist attacks, we physically fed people either on the road, went to them, they came to us, that's how we got meals back and forth. And after communicating our need locally here in the valley to Mayor Kleindienst, I was so impressed by his willingness and understanding to really embrace what we're all about and understand our importance of being in the community. And so we left our meeting and we didn't even get out of the building, this building, and he called us back in right away and he said, "Guess what? I've just made a phone call and have secured funding." And even though the vehicle this day resides in the valley here and is ready 24/7 to respond, it does bear the name of the funding organization, but quite frankly, it's due to you and I really, really appreciate it. Last year, we had the opportunity as an organization and a chapter to work directly with Mayor Kleindienst and the wonderful, awesome city staff that you have here to coordinate what I feel as the most significant September 11th America Remembers event that was put on in this county. As an organization and Red Cross, you all know we were intricately involved in the response and the support of the families. And to this day, we're still providing support to 12 families who reside in Riverside County that were directly impacted after 9/11. We're still helping them from contributions that all of you gave. That event that was held here in the valley and we were asked to participate in all events was by far the most moving experience that I've ever participated in. And that was a vision that we were allowed to participate in because the mayor had the vision and wanted to put something together that would be honorable for all of those, for all of us that were affected after that. It was a wonderful event and of all those that we actually participated in, that by far is one that I will cherish for the rest of my life. Finally, the mayor was most kind and served as a keynote speaker to a Red Cross conference from executives across the state of California we actually had here in Palm Springs last March and was kind enough to give us kind of a morale boost. We'd taken some beatings after 9/11 and he came and he said, "You know, you do great work. Hold your head up high. Move on. You do wonderful things in this valley. You're here every single day. You work side by side with emergency personnel and you've got a lot to be proud and thankful for." And so my comments, I guess, are leading up to even though we have a small token of our appreciation, it really is a big one from our heart. And on behalf of the Riverside County Chapter of the Red Cross, our board, our staff, our volunteers, and to all of those that we serve every single day, a small token of our appreciation I'd like to present to you.
Okay. Quick response and I may want to ask you just a couple of questions. When I spoke at the keynote, here's the question I posed to the audience. Okay, so assume the Red Cross is gone. It doesn't exist. It's no longer here. Who's taking over that task? Because the government doesn't do it. Private citizens don't do it. There has to be an entity that takes charge in the event of emergency. And this country's been blessed by the American Red Cross. I mean, when something happens, who do you call?
You call the Red Cross.
Call the Red Cross. You don't think, you call the Red Cross. And no one understands that this organization is not governmentally funded. This is not something that we put on. It's not something that private citizens, you know, somehow got together and did it on their own. This is an entity that requires the support of a community, if not a state, if not a nation. And the reason we had the response we did after 9/11 and everything before and after is because the American Red Cross, and they do, they fight to be there when the time comes. They can't gear up. They have to be ready now. So what I told everyone in the audience, the people that worked at the American Red Cross, is thanks because when we need you, it's just a phone call. It's not, "We'll be there in a couple of days." It's immediate response. And I think that's heroic work.
Thank you.
I thank you for this. It's been a pleasure. How's the Red Cross doing these days?
Well, we're facing some pretty significant challenges and maybe I'd like to come visit you if I could. Give you a call.
Well, I know the state's not affected you because the state does not affect you positively or negatively.
That's right, because we don't get any state money, so maybe that's a blessing.
Well, thank you for this and thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you for your time.
I'm going to segue off of this because this is the annual, this is the anniversary, if you will, of 9/11. And tomorrow morning again, we have a real small, very short commemorative service out in front of City Hall here. We're going to start tomorrow at about 6:30. People start forming out in front and at 6:45, we'll start the service and it should last about 15 minutes. It's just an opportunity to stop and remember what happened, that tragic occurrence, what happened two years ago. We don't want to interrupt your day anymore than that, but we thought we owe it to the 3,000 people plus that died that day. I mean, their lives were rudely taken from them and I just think we're compelled as Americans to pause on that day and remember them. So if we can tomorrow morning, it'll be just about breaking. The sun will just be about coming out at 6:24, I'm told. So it'll be sort of a striking part of the day and come join us. Okay?
Okay.
Pam, thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. Very nice. Thank you. Thank you. On that whole thing about they never left the building and got the money, that doesn't happen all the time. Don't have calls come in tomorrow because that was, that was very lucky because we had a great organization that understood what you did and said, "Count us in." I think it was $85,000, wasn't it? It was a pretty good chunk of change. That was one good phone call, I'll tell you that. Let's turn to our city clerk for a report on the posting of the agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The agenda you had before you was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday. The city manager is withdrawing item A for the Community Redevelopment Agency. Therefore, the agency will not need to meet tonight. Additionally, I did give to the council in your yellow folder some additional materials consisting of a legislative draft that provides conditions for item one.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Housing Authority, the Industrial Development Authority. We're going to report out closed session and study session. Non-study session. Thank you. The Housing Authority, the Industrial Development Authority, the Finance Authority, and now the Community Redevelopment Agency have no business scheduled for tonight's meeting. So we'll move into the first order of business before the city council and that would be public comments. Anyone wishing to address the city council on any matters within the jurisdiction, please come forward at this time. Good evening. You can come right to that same chair. That'd be great. Sure the microphone's on. And welcome. If you give your name to the city clerk.
Thank you. I'm Robin Burns with Classic Cab and Coachella Valley Taxi Owners Association. Thank you. I understand that this evening, we're hopefully going to be addressing in some way, shape, or form the issue of advertising on taxicabs or lifting of the ban and putting that on the agenda, we hope. And I would just hope that in my short little comments here, that I might be able to make somewhat of an impact of how important this is. I've met with many of the council members and I look forward to meeting with those of you who I've left messages for. Hope we can proceed and have a very short meeting. I own Classic Cab and I also have been in this business for about eight years and I can tell you that it's been a struggle owning a taxi company, but there's a reason I would love for you to consider lifting the ban on the advertising so that we can generate income for our industry that's beyond that. In addition to the fact that it literally would bring an industry economically out of the red and into the black is besides the point. Another reason that would make a very good reason for us to do this is that, for instance, today I had four of my six cabs. One was in Santa Rosa, one was in Los Angeles, one was in Oceanside, and one was in Ontario. I'm Santa Rosa, Northern California. And if we had advertising on the tops of these cabs, we would be promoting Palm Springs and our area all over the state today. And that's a great reason to do that. The money that would be spent on revenue is going to be spent somewhere in advertising. If it does deem to be spent on advertising for taxis, it personally for my business would mean an income of $50,000 a year. It's significant. It's not that I want to get rich. That's not it at all. We need it to take care of business, but my reason today for coming to you and making you aware of something has to do with something beyond that. And the reason is Carlos Cuellar, who was killed this weekend, he's a taxi driver in India. And we are in a growing area and you know, I moved here from Los Angeles to get away from the crime and the traffic and I would never have thought I'd be addressing a crime issue, but I am today. By the advertising, the reason I want to correlate this with you is that one of the aspects of the advertising is that on one of our options, we can have end caps that are a panic button, that the driver discreetly pushes a button and it says, "Call 911." I don't know if that might have helped Carlos. It could have. The other aspect is that many of these systems have GPS systems attached. Even if they don't, the income from this advertising would help us buy a GPS system to make it a safer situation. I normally have at least 50 calls when I have an ad running for drivers. I had an ad running Sunday and Monday for drivers. I got two. Both of them were very concerned about this issue. I hope you can find a reason to pass this. It is an issue that is done in every major city in the country. I hope you can consider not only just putting this on the agenda, but making this a priority because for us, it's life impacting. We're feeling the effects right now. This will help us to create a safer, more effective business and be true goodwill ambassadors for the city of Palm Springs. We are right now. We're normally, tourism is the number one industry. We are normally the first people they deal with when they come in town and the last people they deal with when they leave. And I don't know, I can't speak for everybody, I can only speak for myself to say, I've always tried to provide a very good, high-end experience and this passing of advertising will help me do that and provide a safety issue that I can maybe address and not worry as much about my guys out there and gals out there in the field. So I urge you not just to put this on the agenda, let's pass this quickly. We need it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Anyone else wishing to address the council during public comments? Very good. Seeing none, we'll close public comments, turn to a consent agenda, which we don't have one. There is no public hearing. We'll turn to council comments, announcements, or inter-agency reports. Council? I only have one. Last night, I was, I was forced to walk the plank for bow-wow, hooky-lau, which, yeah, I was a Polynesian water sacrifice. And I was not alone. I think our police chief, where is that young man, also joined us along with a number of TV and radio celebrities and other members of the media. We were in a silent auction and the intent was to raise money for the guide dogs of the desert and save a pet. And we did this over at the Caliente Tropics Resort. And I was told to wear a bathing suit and I said, "No, they won't pay to see me in a bathing suit." In fact, you'd lose your crowd if you had me in a bathing suit. So I went in the traditional mayor garb with dress wool pants, silk tie, silk suspenders, dress shirt, dress shoes, and I was pushed, if not prodded, off a plank into the, into the water. And last night's efforts lasted about two hours and they raised about $10,000. No, not for just me. No. No, no, no. But there was aggressive bidding. The tables generated roughly $8,000 for the, I think it was about a half dozen, Chief is about right, about a half a dozen of us, raised $8,000. And of the $8,000, the high bidder picked me and asked me to walk the plank for $3,000. So that was my night last night. I don't know what you guys did last night. I hope it was a little calmer than what I had in mind, but that was my, my attempt at helping guide dogs and save a pet. There you have it. Chief, any comments on that?
No, you covered it all.
Chief was a great sport. He was out there. He was looking good. It's a pretty bizarre thing when you're, when you're asked to actually walk a plank and kind of jump in the water fully and close. Although there was one guy that was not exactly fully, he was in a nice little bathing suit and he looked like he belonged in a bathing suit, though, I'll tell you that. All right. Enough of that. Anything else, council? Fascinating. Absolutely fascinating night.
It's vicious.
Yeah, it's frightening. You don't want to go there, I'm telling you. That's why I left my clothes fully on, don't you know? Long sleeve, the whole nine yards. All right. Legislative calendar night. The first order of business before us is case number 5.0344. It's PD 164A. It is the Agua Caliente Band of Cuyah Indians. Mr. Reddy, I'll ask for your staff report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is the Prairie Schooner property. The planning commission took a look at this today and before you this evening is to approve the final development plans. Mr. Evans will give you the report from the planning commission and the other details. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. Good evening, Mr. Evans.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the planning commission met this afternoon and I'm pleased to report, we did make up a quorum today, so we did take action on this item. The proposal is really the final development plans for the Prairie Schooner parking lot. It's part of the Palm Springs Convention Center master plan. This particular parking lot was approved by the city council and the planning commission after a public hearing where an environmental assessment, initial study was reviewed and considered by the city council. All potential significant impacts of the project were mitigated to a level of insignificance. The parking lot was approved at 475 spaces. The plans before you today and the plans the planning commission approved have 475 parking spaces. The plans comply with, with most of the city's parking requirements. There's a couple of adjustments that I'll point out in the design of it very quickly and then I can answer questions. One of the things that we wanted to clarify and we started discussion of it last, last week when we talked about the agreement between the city and the Agua Caliente Band of Cuyah Indians is how this fits into not only the convention center approval, but also how it fits into the plans for the spa resort and casino. Tom Davis, tribal planning official, submitted a letter. You have a copy that basically explains what the tribe is actually doing relative to parking at the casino, that they are not adding 3,000 parking spaces, that they are not putting parking spaces all over section 14. So Mr. Davis's letter is before the council. I can certainly try and answer any questions, but I think as you look at that letter, you'll realize what the tribe is doing is they're trying to maximize the parking around the casino. They're trying to work with other entities to create mixed-use relationships for parking lots, which this is, so that there's not a need to add additional parking. They know that they will have events and activities that will push the parking that they've already constructed and are constructing. Just as we know, the convention center at times will have events and activities that may push the amount of parking that we provide. In section 14, the city's general plan and zoning ordinance recognize that additional parking is part of our plan. It's part of our program and our zoning ordinance, parking lots are an allowable use by right of zone. The intent there was, we knew that just off of Takwitz, just off of Indian Canyon, there may be a need in the future for parking lots. So that's been our plan. It's been our plan for probably over 20 years to have that type of activity and clearly in our current policy and programs and ordinances. This particular parking lot will be designed to comply and, and be consistent with the north convention center parking lot that the city had designed. The landscape plan of the north lot was designed by Michael Bucino and his associates. Michael is an accomplished landscape architect and tried to create a special feel for this parking lot with desert plant materials around the perimeter and then bringing in a very large shade tree for the parking lot shading. We asked the casino design team, who the tribe has used to design this parking lot, to take Mr. Bucino's plans and really use them to create the Prairie Schooner or Convention Center parking lot in this situation. What they've done is, is a compromise between casino interest about lighting of the parking lot, city lighting standards, community design. We're going to have more trees around the perimeter of this parking lot than the convention center parking lot and we're going to have a few less trees actually within the parking lot, so we get a little bit better spread on parking lot lighting. The parking lot lighting is intended to be the same lighting intensity as the convention center. We've given them the convention center plans and that lighting should be somewhere in the vicinity of one average foot candle of one to maybe two. The planning commission would prefer that we push it down to approximately one foot candle average. What we did was we put the recommendations from the planning commission in written form. We handed that out to the council. The one thing the council, or the commission would encourage the council to try to work into the budget is the upgraded sidewalk along Andreas Road. As you know, in the convention center, there was a proposal to have a very upgraded sidewalk. It's fairly expensive. We're not sure we can afford it. We're costing it out. The planning commission's recommendation to you, if it is financially feasible, they would prefer to have that. They think it would be a great community asset. We told the commission, we don't think that's the case. We think it's substantially more than what we would contemplate in a traditional sidewalk. Those are the recommendations of the planning commission. The exhibit is over here on the wall. Certainly answer any questions and the commission's vote was unanimous today.
Very good. Thank you, Doug. Council questions of staff report? It's the council's pleasure on this, then.
Mr. Evans, or Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills.
I get you and Doug mixing up all the time. The, is there any potential perhaps in an effort to go towards the, the way the planning commission had recommended in that this, the sidewalk construction be bid as an alternate with, with the flagstone edging, just to see how it goes? Because ultimately, the city's paying for this and, you know, there, I would, I understand what Mr. Bucino is trying to do. I think, I was concerned about some safety issues before, but I, those are, I think those can be handled. There is a, I'd just be curious to see what the amount is. If we do it as an alternate, I think we'd be, we have an option to look at it that way.
On the, the issue from the standpoint of the Prairie Schooner, because the casinos team is going to build it, they'll be giving us some cost estimates. We certainly could ask them to give us a cost estimate. We got some, some information today that maybe Mr. Bucino can find a way to make it work. If he can, we can report back to you. The tribe, in our discussions, they'll build it any way we want them to build it, so it's really a matter of our decision. They probably don't need that decision immediately because they've got some grading work, but probably within a week and a half, they have to know. So we could ask them to give us a construction estimate.
I think, I mean, I think we, we, I think we owe it to ourselves at least to take a look at that option and I do, and by the comment, I do not in any means want to take one extra day away from that, that construction schedule, so.
Okay.
And with that, I would move approval of the resolution.
Motion to approve by Mr. Mills and second by Mr. Oden. Is that with the condition that we have an add-on on the, on the sidewalk upgrade?
Right.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Foro deemed unanimous. Mr. Reddy, any additional legislative items at this time?
There are none, sir.
Are there any added starters?
There are none.
Under reports or requests, council? Reports or requests?
probably within a week and a half, they have to know. So we could ask them to give us a construction estimate.
I think, I mean, I think we owe it to ourselves, at least, to take a look at that option, and I do, and by the comment, I do not in any means want to take one extra day away from that construction schedule, so.
Yeah.
And with that, I would move approval of the resolution.
Motion approval by Mr. Mills and Second Amendment Mr. Oden. Is that with the condition that we have an add-on on the sidewalk upgrade?
Right.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Four-oh deemed unanimous. Mr. Oden, any additional legislative items at this time?
There are none, sir.
Are there any added starters?
There are none.
Under reports or requests, council? Reports or requests? Seeing none? Public reports or requests? Or staff reports or requests? None? All right, with that, I guess we will adjourn for our study session. I'm going to list these off, Mr. and Mrs. Clerk. Okay. Well, let's just go right into our study session, then. Thank you. Turn now to Tiffany for our closed session report from our city attorney. Tiffany, Israel is sitting in for us for Mr. Alshire, who is in England taking, I believe, his son to college. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Very good. Tiffany, nice to see you.
Thank you. The Community Redevelopment Agency met in closed session and discussed items one through five. Direction was given, no action was taken. The city council met and had a conference on items three and four under real property negotiations, and direction was given, no action was taken. Under existing litigation, neither of the actions was discussed, and under anticipated litigation, item two was discussed, direction was given, no action was taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. We'll turn now to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the council during study session?
Mr. Weiner should take a few lessons from you.
Very good. Seeing none, we'll, any public comments? Oh, yes, by all means. Joy. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Joy Meredith. Just to clear up any confusion, I'm secretary of the Palm Springs Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. That's just a little bit from last time, though.
That's a beautiful backpedaling you've got going on there.
Yeah. So I just want to clear that up from last time, because I guess I didn't really make that that clear, and I'm afraid I confuse things. But my name is Joy Meredith. I own Crystal Fantasy in beautiful downtown Palm Springs. I'm the president of Main Street, the merchants association of downtown, and I'm here tonight because I saw on the agenda Downtown Development Update. And I'm here tonight to tell you that, of course, in my zillions of meetings with Jerry Ogburn and lots of times and discussions together, we see that there's a lot of really good things happening downtown, and I don't want to take anything away from his report, but I just want to tell you that as president of Main Street, I'm very happy of the direction of how things are going. Yeah, for something like six years, we were trying to figure it out the other day, and we think that things are really going in a good direction right now. We're feeling really hopeful about it, and we're very pleased to have this man downtown. Don't know what I'd do without him. I know I say that a lot, but I really, I really just couldn't even begin to tell you, because before we were directionless, and now we have, you know, a single point to go to when we have questions, and if Jerry doesn't know the answer, he just tells us who might know the answer. You know, I told Jerry I was going to come here tonight, and he said, "Well, you know, I don't want anybody to think that I asked you to." And so let me say for the record, not only didn't he ask me to, but he wanted to make sure that it didn't appear that way. I just speak from the heart on this. Jerry really helps us downtown, and if you have any questions to ask, he knows that and more, and so I just want to give you the major mood downtown right now, though. We're feeling really hopeful, and there's a lot of good things happening. The Fashion Plaza, even though it is a Band-Aid, and we all know that it is, it's still, you know, it stopped that stagnation, though, that was becoming a really, like, emotionally depressing thing for a lot of the merchants downtown. So we really thank you for supporting that and helping that get along, and just so many of the other things that the city council has been very generous to us downtown, you know, that we have our advertising program we're working on now, our marketing, the Share the Legend program. So I just really thank you, and I'll leave the hard stuff to Jerry, for sure, but I just want to tell you I'm here to support Jerry and to support downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joy. Anyone else wishing to speak to council during public comments? Very good. Seeing none? We'll turn to council comments, questions or report. I only got this one news release, I think it's in your packet also, from the airport. We're announcing that Al, Al, are you here? Where's Al? Alaska Airlines is enhancing its seasonal service, including now San Jose to Palm Springs non-stop service.
Do you know the way?
It's resuming the service on October 26th. It's a daily flight that operates using a hundred and thirty-eight passenger Boeing seven thirty-seven, a four-hundred series, and it's back, so new service returns to Palm Springs. Good work over at the airport once again. All right? People say get more flights. So last night I was, what did you do last night? You talked about me already. Let's turn to our city manager for his comments and follow-up on requests. Mr. Oden?
Thank you. Members of council, I would like to note a piece of positive news. We have been searching, a policy of searching for additional grants and revenue, and I'm pleased to announce that we had applied through Senator Boxer's office for a recreation grant, which we have been notified that we will receive approximately $200,000 that will go towards the swimming center, the swim center. So we'll be bringing you more details. We just received the initial confirmation. The details will follow. That's good news.
That is very good.
And also, on follow-ups, council member Reller Spurgeon had asked about procurement cards. We have the report, the assistant city manager has that report. I just need to proofread that, and then that will be out to council this week. And second of all, the mayor had made an inquiry about cameras in the parking structure. We're still trying to finalize the proposal, and we hope to bring that to legislative action within the next thirty days.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll turn now to Mr. Oden.
Did you, I thought that was simply an inquiry that would come back for discussion, not a task to say, "Go and bring it," you know, that we'd be ready to do this.
You can bring it back at a study session level, you can bring it back with as action. All I wanted to know is what would it take if we had it, so.
Yeah, which is, which is worth looking at, but we're not ready for it to action.
Yeah, you can lay out options.
Yes.
I mean, you can bring it during legislative calendar, but we can say, "Okay, send it back for more study." I mean, it's up to you.
And that was just one of our attempts to try to limit the things coming back to study session, that would just go to legislative and the debate would take place there, but I'll bring it back, I'll re-agendize it with several options.
Thank you, Mr. Oden.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll go to city council study session topic. First one is the Downtown Development Update. Mr. Oden, we'll turn to your staff for some report.
Thank you. I will call Jerry Ogburn up to the table, the director of the Downtown Development Office, but I would like to note to the council that every time you drive by the parking structure, it just, besides exciting me, it reminds you of all the things that we possibly can do downtown, and we've been continuing to do them. Jerry's going to give you a report on our continuing efforts. As you saw before you last week, the infrastructure for lighting in the uptown area, that's a very exciting piece, and there's several more of those that Jerry needs to share with you this evening. And with that, I turn it over to Jerry.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council. The city manager mentioned the parking structure, which isn't in my report, but I thought I'd lead off. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but the California chapter of the American Institute of Architects awarded Mr. Chioffi, our architect, a Gold Nugget Award for the parking structure. Unfortunately, there's not a category for parking structures, so it won an award as a retail building. So if you have any thoughts in the future about adaptive reuse, it certainly is already an award-winning retail building.
Which may go to the heart of the matter, that they've never acknowledged the architectural merit of parking structures in the past, because there's been no parking structures of merit in the past. And what Mr. Chioffi did was demonstrate to the entire field that you can do a design that is award-winning.
That's correct.
New category. Interesting.
No category for parking structures. Wow. In my review this evening, briefly, I'd like to kind of start on the north end of some of the work I've been doing and work my way south and east, so without graphics, please bear with me a little bit. Starting in the uptown area, the Heritage District, I believe at your last meeting you approved the construction drawings to go out for a lighting project, and that's going very well. We hope, we're hopeful of getting some good bids back in. I've met with the uptown group this morning. The plan is to install foundations for an additional thirty-five lights to completely separate the electrical system, so our seasonal lights, our holiday season lights, and our uplights on the palm trees won't keep burning out. So we'll have increased capacity, the new lines should be in place before Thanksgiving with our current schedule, and then the individual foundations, thirty-five of them will be in by January 2nd. I've already begun signing contracts for light purchases at $1,620 per light. Those will be paid for by the property owners. Four lights have already gone in on Gran Via Valmonte. They are not included in my thirty-five number, but we'll have twenty-five on Palm Canyon and ten on the side streets, leading up to it. So we think that that will be in place early in January. As far, moving further down into the downtown area, and of course, as you know, there are some other new businesses coming into the uptown area, the new restaurants and so on, you know, the new development across from Safari is now has closed escrow and is apparently on its way. So we think there's some nice things that are happening up there, and I know the Uptown Association is, it's been a tough summer, but I think they're pretty optimistic. They know the first Friday is a good effort, the lighting will help, and so on. If you, somebody did shuffle my notes, by the way, so, anyway, but I'll freelance this next part. Moving down into the La Ho to Amado block, you probably read this morning in the paper that Hamburger Mary's is coming back to that block. They've been here before, and this is typical of how my office works, is I've been working with that gentleman, Joe Garcia, for at least three months on different locations, and he panicked called me yesterday, which I didn't answer. I wasn't there to answer the call. He says, "I want you to know, it's going in the press tomorrow morning, and I don't want you to be caught unawares." Well, I was, but that's okay. So we're going to be working with him and some other things in that immediate area. There is a proposal, by the way, a major development on the empty lot just north of the fish place there on North Palm Canyon, and this is to be a food court. It's being proposed, and the developers will be Steve Lyle, Hal Hall, and it's the parcel that Vince Perosi used to own. There is a brochure here, if any of you are interested in looking at it, but it's going to be quite a stunning development, and so we've met again with the people on that block. They think it'll be in addition to food traffic or to foot traffic in that block, and it's something that really fits the need. And there may even be a chicken restaurant in it, I'm not sure about that, but I keep getting pressure from the back of the room here. Going to the Amado to Takwitz area, the Desert Fashion Plaza, I think, has received a lot of good positive comments. I think when our visitors come back next season, they will see something new and fresh. We're working ahead on that. Some of the tenants that we've been working on, I've been approached by Johnny Rockets, which is a national chain, are very interested in a location in downtown, and specifically in the Desert Fashion Plaza. I know that John is working on some temporary tenants, including a new ladies' clothing store. There is a bookstore interested in taking all of the Saks building on a temporary tenant basis, and they're even working with a microbrewery group to take over the old Peanut Gallery space. So our hope is, by the time we finish our work in the street by the 7th of November, coincidentally, at the same time he finishes his work on the private side, that much of that space will be leased on an interim basis. We are still working with the likes of Barnes &amp; Noble for a major bookstore in that area, but they're twelve to eighteen months away from a decision point, wanting to evaluate how they're doing in the Westfield shopping town, but their national representative, whom we met with her in Las Vegas, as I rolled out my demographic package, she says, "You don't need to tell me. I'm trying to buy a house in Palm Springs. I love Palm Springs." So if there's any way they can show justification for a location here, they will. Also, another vacancy on Palm Canyon, the old shoe shack at Andreas and Palm Canyon. Another trend that we're beginning to see has been leased to a group that's going to be called Kids Corner. It's going to be, their target market are families with children and their grandparents, and I feel like I've been targeted already as the latter group, but it's going to be a high-quality clothing, furniture, everything for kids, and that's another emerging market that we see coming back to Palm Springs, are families and their kids. The Holiday Lodge, of course, Dave Johnston has done a wonderful job there, and they're in the process of tenanting that project. I think it's meant a real addition. On the streetscape of Desert Fashion Plaza, complete by November 7th, we're adding twenty-one lights and banners, and we've already ordered the holiday season lights for that. We will probably need some new patriotic banners. We want to have that completed with the lights up, banners, and holiday season lights up before the Veterans Day Parade. That's our traditional kickoff of the holiday season in downtown. That'll be adding thirty-eight parking spaces, all of this being paid for the city in the public right of way. There's been some confusion publicly, what the city's doing and what Mr. Westman's doing. Mr. Westman is working on his property, we're working on our property, and we're on the same timeline, but he paid for the demolition removal of the concrete trellis structure, and the city had nothing to do with that, and he's bearing all of his costs on the private property, as he should. But we'll end up with additional parking, lighting, and it'll look like the rest of downtown for the first time. And we are paying the city's share of that out of, when we acquired the property for the parking structure, there was, the property owners deeded their property over to us in exchange for parking rights, except for one property owner, and that, we, the city council ended up paying him $450,000 for a ninety-day option. He paid that back, so actually, that money was part of the parking bond issue, which we're now applying to additional parking, other than the parking structure. Leibling Trust property, that's always been a problem along Takwitz. The good news is that, with the exception of one tenant, it's going to be fully leased. The bad news is the one tenant is Leeds, and that is not going well. It's been a little bit of frustration. I've tried to call Mr. Weiner, I've tried to call Mr. Barron. Apparently, the Leibling Trust is saying that Mr. Weiner has been uncooperative, and they are proceeding with trying to lease the space on their own. So that's not a good sign. He has not, he has made representations that he was going to reopen, but apparently they can't get a response out of him. But we have, in that block, we have a new small, we're getting, with the absence of a major bookstore, and the interesting thing is we're getting a number of small niche-market bookstore inquiries. One that's going to open there now, the signed lease, is a bookstore dealing, targeting Latino market, children's sector. We have another one that's very interested in going and doing science fiction. So we're finding small niche-market bookstores that want to come in and do something sort of unique. So that will be completely international. Cosmetique is a new, really nice, high-end shop that's opened up in that, in that building. Moving across the street in what is now known historically as the Starbucks Building, we all used to know that as the Oasis Brussels. Capstone Development Company out of San Diego has, I am told, signed a purchase agreement and agreed on price with Mrs. Cohen, and they're proposing to come in and do a major redevelopment. I have their brochures, they, these people that were drawing to the community, they're from San Diego, have a very impressive track record here in Palm Desert and Down Valley, as well as in San Diego. What they would like to do is really upscale the Palm Canyon frontage and do a two-level parking structure, surface plus one, and run it straight behind Marcano Plaza as well. So we could pick up quite a bit of parking there, and they're looking at ways that they can do that privately with our, with our support and help, that's certainly taking the lead on it. I'm sure that won't be controversial at all. Anyway, the, another one that's coming up is Courtyard Center, Ocean Properties Development from San Diego, also a very impressive track record, has purchased the property. They are working with Signature Theaters, who are planning to do a substantial renovation to the Courtyard Ten and convert them into stadium, state-of-the-art stadium-style seats. Their plans were to be submitted this week, but there's going to be a little bit of delay, another week or so, but apparently they're intending to invest significant dollars into the theaters. Ocean Properties is planning to upgrade the rest of the center, try to get past the idea that it was never really successful as a retail center, but upgrade it into professional office and services with a certain secondary development of theater-supportive uses, food court, you know, entertainment-type uses, but primarily really upgrade it and make a significant investment in it, dress the parking structure. They also are kind of interesting, you know, we tried this, do this Takwitz lighting program, and we had a couple of people that did not participate, and they were, you know, I'll name them, Mr. Noya and the Hilton, decided that they didn't want to pay to get into the lighting program. Well, one of the things that Ocean Properties wants out on the table very early is they want that lighting program, and they are going to do it on their block, both on Takwitz and on Arenas. They want to extend the walking experience from downtown, connect it to the theater. So that's a, I think, a major help, and so they really want to work with the property owners to encourage us completing the Takwitz lighting program and the Arenas lighting program. They also are interested in, so you know, in the parking lot you talked about, is they would like to get a pedestrian crossing at Calle El Verado, Calle El Verado, to connect to the convention center, because they feel with stadium seating connected to the convention center could be some, really, some joint, joint-use opportunities. Marquee Villas on Arenas Road should be in October submittal. That's for eighty-six timeshare units, and they will also be doing- And they will also be doing part of the Arenas Road, sort of Phase 2 of Arenas Road with lighting and landscaping. There is a potential that they'll ask for the agency to help in some of that. But that's 86 units. They're going to build underground parking. And from what I've seen, it's really a high-quality development. Mr. Choffey's the architect on that. And Liz, it sounds like I'm promoting him, he's also doing the Los Brieses expansion right across from the parking structure that he designed, which will be another 83 rooms, which would get us into the South Cuyahoga diagonal parking program, which we could pick up 85 diagonal spaces in that area. The Fisherman's Market's even going to expand again around the parking structure. You sold back to them 550 square feet behind the trash area, and they're going to create a very, what I call almost a theme park. They call it the Boatyard. And it'll be a lot of fun. 296 South Palm Canyon Drive, the owner of that has established the ground floor as a Spanish-designed furniture and accessory store. And he's looking to do the second floor as a designs industry showroom space, if you will. Barista to Ramon, I'm sure you're aware that Mr. Westman, what he's done with the building there, the Old American Savings, I think is a very nice, solid addition to the southern end of downtown. We have, just as last week, the beginnings of a major redevelopment proposal. A developer from Santa Monica wants to take the area basically from Tony Roma's south all the way to Ramon and develop an in-town neighborhood, mixed-use development, including commercial in the bottom, residential above. And the owner of that property is Wayne Lee. He's on the Main Street Board. And I think that's another example of how getting property owners involved in Main Street can help, certainly help during the parking structure deal. Oh, here's the cards that got shuffled. Okay. Well, we talked about the Main Street food court. Okay. The other thing I wanted to talk about generally is the Share of the Legend program. As you recall, the council allocated $85,600 for a Share of the Legend cooperative marketing program. Our committee has met. You'll see in this, in the hardbound version, will be in all the hotel rooms throughout the valley. And that's, that's the graphic there. So we have both the Desert Sun advertising program, which we're trying to expand significantly, that's in place for the local and regional hotel guests, our presence in Palm Springs Life, Desert Guide, airport displays at the airport. We have four locations there that will be for the people that get off the airplanes as they come to town. We have a touchscreens program for those that are coming in by auto. There'll be 30-some locations, half of those in the Coachella Valley, half out, San Diego, LA. And we're having a 45-second, actually, it's almost a full-minute video being produced so that they come to the visitor information center here, or the one in Palm Desert, or some of the major hotels in the valley, will be on that program. And we think that's going to be very good. We've advertised in the Bottom Line. We have a program in that, so on and so forth. The Follies Connection. So we have allocated so far, we still have a balance of almost $20,000 that we have not allocated in that program. And we are now looking at other ways, radio advertising and so on, to get that done. Another initiative downtown-wide is a comprehensive managed parking program. This is one that the Economic Development Corporation and Main Street are working on together. We initially asked Apcoa Standard, which, who is our contractor at the airport in town, to give us a proposal, which they did, looking at managing all city parking lots and structure in downtown. And Main Street, at its last meeting, voted to open that up, feeling that perhaps there were others that might be more responsive to their needs. So that's back at the EDC level. They will be, we're building a list. Jessica Scarf is helping to build a list of other parking management firms to talk to. So I'm sure that will, will come back. The other thing that I'm going to need to deal with at some point in the future on a study session is policy recommendations for the use of the parking structure, our award-winning retail structure, for events. And we, we know that has, one has been approved by council as a car auction in November. And there are other, there are others out there that want to do things from concerts to car auctions, to shows, to so on. And I have a draft of a suggested policy, which Main Street approved unanimously at the last meeting, and I need to advance that to you. Now, I think that's all my cards, except for the ones that were shuffled to the bottom by the public speaker just before me. No. I would be happy to answer any questions. I don't have a grand finale.
No finale. Always have a finale. Council questions? Jerry, update Francis Stevens Park.
Francis Stevens Park.
We had talked about fences around the park for a while, and then an arts center around the park, an event center. You've got a lot of activity going on. The corridor is filling up, very active. Heaven Stone's on the corner on the east side. The Spanish Inn is for sale. Pepetree looks better now than it's looked in all 27 years I've ever been here.
Right.
I mean, you've got all this activity. You talked about the street lights in that area. But is there anything going on at the, at the park? Are we just holding off on that?
We've, we've kind of held off. I, I think as an observation, every time we do, like the project with the fountain and then along Indian and what we did on, on the Gran Vial Valente, that always spurs private investment. It's happened consistently up there. And, and we're really seeing a lot of things happening around the park. But we really haven't done anything as far as taking the rest of that forward. I think Palm Canyon Theater seems to be operating well. Desert Arts Center seems to be, so it's, it's kind of like, it's not broken.
It's working its balance. Don't worry about it.
Don't mess with it, yeah. But there is a lot of things, there are a lot of things going on around the park that are good things.
Yeah, a lot of activity going on. Okay. Anything else? Jerry, take the rest of the night off, will you?
Okay.
I understand. All right, let's go to item G2, which is our National Citizen Survey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if we could have a five-minute recess to set up our equipment.
By all means, take a quick and brief recess, and we'll come right back.
Thank you. We'll call the meeting back to order. It's 8:09.
Mr. Mayor, I need to make sure on clarification that we have excused Ms. Hodges for tonight.
We did not do that.
No, and I need to make sure that...
What?
We didn't do that when we did the roll call. If we want it rather than not, we wanted to excuse Ms. Hodges.
She was excused, huh?
She was in closed session today.
Okay. We'll turn to item two, which is the National Citizen Survey. Mr. Reddy, I believe you have our report and PowerPoint.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of Council Troy Bootsloff and Lee Husfeld will give the report. I would just like to make an opening comment. The National Citizen Survey is a survey that we asked when we got commissioned through the ICMA, which is the International City Management Association. This is our ability to benchmark our service. It's an ability to know where we're at. It's an ability to take the pulse of the community in a snapshot of benchmark. So we have something to work against. We're continually trying to improve the quality of service delivery. And as you know, we have decreasing resources to do so, but we strive to improve, improve, improve. Quality, quality, quality. That's what we stress. This helps us to achieve that. Actually, for the most part, it was enlightening, good news, and it gives us an idea of where some of our weaknesses are and where we can very much improve in the future. I'd like to do this annually, if not every two years, so we can continue to benchmark and improve our service. So with that, I would ask Mr. Bootsloff to begin the presentation, and we'll share the results with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. Members of the City Council. Well, this is the third time we've attempted to do this, so hopefully this time it'll be a charm. The National Citizen Survey, as the city manager indicated, was done through the International City County Management Association. I want to speak a little bit about the survey administration. The survey was mailed to households in Palm Springs through three mailings that occurred between the 10th and 24th of February of this year. It went to approximately 1,200 households that were selected to participate in the survey using a stratified systematic sampling method. Each individual within each household was selected using a birth date method. Of the 1,200 eligible households, 389 completed the survey, providing a response rate of 36%, which I think is important to note because, in general, response rates obtained on the National Citizen Survey ranged between 25 and 40%. So we were on the higher end of the response rate. So I think that's a compliment to the community in trying to respond to this. Approximately 120 addresses were sampled, were either vacant or not found, so we didn't have a lot that was returned to the city, which I think, again, is a testament to how thorough we were in going through the mailing list and making sure that the National Citizen Survey had the most up-to-date and accurate mailing list available. The survey results were weighted to reflect the demographic profile of all residents in the city of Palm Springs. As the city manager indicated, the survey really focused in on quality of life issues in the community. And I think it's important to note that when asked to rate the overall quality of life, 33% of those who responded thought it was excellent. Only 1% rated the overall quality of life as poor. Palm Springs as a place to live received an average rating of 80 on a 100-point scale. I think that's really amazing that we had that kind of high rating, and that's a testament, again, to the way the city is maintained and run. The pie chart that Lee's going to be bringing up here shows the breakdown of the quality of life. You can see 33% said it was excellent, 56% said good, 10% fair, and again, the 1% rating it as poor. Some of the specific questions on quality of life, Palm Springs as a place to live, on a 100-point scale, we received 80. Neighborhoods as a place to live, 73 points. Palm Springs as a place to raise children, 60 points. Palm Springs as a place to retire, 80 points. And finally, the overall quality of life, 74 points on a 100-point scale. Under the category of community characteristics, a couple of things came out of the survey in terms of strengths and challenges. Under the strengths, openness and acceptance, air quality, and overall appearance. Challenges, homelessness, unsupervised youth, and rundown buildings, weeds, weeded lots, or junk vehicles, mainly code enforcement-related issues. Looking specifically at the strengths, on a 100-point scale, again, sense of community, 61 points. Openness and acceptance, 69 points. Overall appearance, 63. Opportunities to attend cultural activities, 62. Shopping, which really should have been listed as a challenge, 45. And I think it was one of the other findings you'll find later on in the survey. Air quality, 65. Recreation, 59. And finally, job opportunities, 37. Now, if you go to the challenges, you can see the bar graph here showing the percentages. Again, homelessness being the number-one challenge at 31%, and then dropping there to 21% for unsupervised youth. Rundown buildings, as we said, 19%. Taxes came in at 16%, followed by crime, too much growth, and then dropping down there, as you can see the lower end of the ratings. And if there's any questions anytime throughout this, please don't hesitate to ask.
I've got one on this one, on the challenges piece.
Mm-hmm.
Do these numbers indicate that, for the most part, the issues are pretty minor? At 8, 17, 19, I mean, are these considered to be favorable numbers at this low? Obviously, if you add them at 80% or 90%, you have a big problem, but these are all fairly low, the highest one being 31 with regards to homelessness.
No, I think the percent is indicative of the respondents' rating it as a major problem. So 7% of those who responded on this issue said noise was a major problem to them, whereas 31% of those who responded said homelessness was a major problem.
Was they a major problem or one of many?
Major problem.
So did they categorically say, list these as major, minor, or not a concern, or do they say, pick one that's a major problem? Are they asked the question?
Yeah, without pulling up the survey instrument, and Lee, maybe you can help me if you recall what the actual... Okay, that's a good point. And as Lee's looking that up, we'll move on to the next slide, and maybe when you have an answer, we can report back. On community characteristics, growth, you can see under job growth, 73% who responded said it was too slow. 3% said it was too fast. Under retail growth, again, this is correlating back to the previous response, 49% found it to be too slow, whereas only 13% found it to be too fast. Finally, on population growth, 4% found it slow, 46% viewed it as being too fast. And I think that might also be in line with some of the feelings throughout the Coachella Valley in terms of the overall growth of the valley and how population seems to be escalating.
But our population is not growing that fast in Palm Springs.
I think it's perceived.
Perceived or represented by the valley view, not so much just the city view.
And it's quite possible that could be just a perception, but not necessarily a specific, because we can't do follow-up questions here, so you can't really tie down as it relates to, is this a perceived Palm Springs problem, or is this more of a global problem throughout the Coachella Valley?
Two years ago, it was represented, I think, in the campaign that both you ran, that growth rate in Palm Springs is kind of slow. Is it a concern, is it otherwise? We were represented as one of the slowest-growing communities in the valley. We are, right? Housing starts, I mean, we're not quick.
And in terms of students in school as well, which is a key indicator to growth.
Oh, growth, okay.
Going back to the question that the mayor had regarding the rating there, it was actually a four-part answer, and it could be either not a problem to a major problem on each of those issues. And there was also a category for don't know, so in terms of the rating, people could select more than one item as being a major problem. That's the rating that you have, so that's why 7% found it to be crime to be a major problem. 31% found homelessness to be a major problem, so it could vary by category. Perceptions of public safety. When evaluating safety in the community, 64% of those who responded to the survey felt somewhat or very safe from violent crimes in Palm Springs. In their neighborhood after dark, 71% of survey participants felt somewhat or very safe, which I think goes to the next slide, which shows you the actual breakdown here of perceptions of public safety in the neighborhood during the day, after dark, and in downtown, and in parks, both in the day and night. And you can see the ratings there. So generally speaking, residents felt that the community is very safe, both in the day and at night, with the exception of parks, which received a very low rating at 22% after dark.
Would one, sorry, would one be concerned about the second to the last column? The parks during the day, to a third of our population, don't feel safe?
No, that's, they do feel, that's feeling very...
Two-thirds do, but a third don't. I mean, to be in the park, you don't feel safe in the daytime in Palm Springs? Perception-wise.
Perception-wise. And again, without being able to answer follow-up, ask follow-up questions as to why they may not feel safe, it's difficult to ascertain why that feeling may exist.
So I can't think from a design standpoint, as if like certain areas are blocked or heavily treed, or, you know, there's unsafe areas because buildings are somehow, you know, remote. I'm not sure where the parks would not feel safe. Victoria Park doesn't feel safe, it's an open park.
Well, I think it just may deal with, we don't know the age of the respondents who responded to this question, so, you know, they may be afraid of encountering new people or people that they don't know, so there's just no way of knowing based upon this information that we have here.
And each park is different, maybe the...
Without some cross-correlations.
That's a good point. The activities at Sunrise may have different users that might make you feel unsafe. Okay, thank you, Troy.
Okay. Going on to public services. 65% of those who responded felt that public services in Palm Springs were good. 13% found them excellent, 16% fair, and then finally, 6% poor. On the question of public trust, 66, the city received 66 points on a 100-point scale for, from residents feeling that they receive a good value for the taxes they pay. 55 points on pleased with the overall direction the city is taking. 62 points on the city welcomes citizen involvement, and finally, 52 points as to the city government listens to its citizens. On the issue of impressions of city employees, on knowledge, on a 100-point scale, we received a 70 points. Our responsiveness, 65 points. Courtesy, 71. And finally, the overall impression of our public employees, 65 points on a 100-point scale. Now, on the question of quality of our public safety services, police services received 70 points, fire services received 82 points, crime prevention generally, 59 points, and traffic enforcement, 56 points. On our public works, street repair was rated at 48 points, street cleaning at 56, street lighting 36, which I think is, again, characteristic of the nature of the community, the fact that we try to keep the lighting levels in local streets to a minimum. 52% sidewalk maintenance, 40 points on traffic signal timing, and finally, the amount of public parking, we received 48 points on a 100-point scale. On our recreation or leisure services, 66 points on city parks, 60 points on recreation programs or classes. And you can see the continuation there with the final appearance of recreation centers, facilities at 66 points. And I'm going to skip over some of the stuff, so if there's any questions, again, don't hesitate to ask. Planning services, I'm sure Doug would love to comment on this, but 41 points on land use planning and zoning. Code enforcement received 36 points, and animal control services, which I don't know why it falls into planning services, but that's how they characterized it, received a total of 56 points. Other public services that they asked questions on and rated, you can see them there, everything from services to seniors to the quality of our cable television services. The different services had different points, and unless the council has any desire to go through there, I'll skip the narrative. The city was also given the opportunity to ask three specific questions, which the city manager, Lee, and myself put together what we thought to represent the community and tried to get some, questions that I think were broad-based to try to find out some specific information about issues that we thought would be important to the community and to the council. On the question of communications tools to, that the city could consider implementing to improve communications with the community, we asked them various questions to see what they would support or not support. And you can see there that on the issue of a community newsletter, it received, 26% strongly supported it. It also had support and a somewhat support by 26, and then it goes down from there. On the issue of additional community meetings, there was some support for that. On an annual report on the city's budget, it received very much, very strong support from the residents at 42%. And offering an expanded website to provide a schedule of events, email subscription service to keep subscribers informed on current events and happens in the city, it received a very strong, strongly-supported rating at 43%. And then finally, more programming on Channel 17 received a somewhat-supported rating at 37%. The next question we asked was on elimination of certain services and our programs to balance the budget. And you'll recall that this came off the heels, or came on the heels of last November's election, when we were trying to support the utility tax. And our question was kind of targeted at trying to figure out if the city would have to eliminate certain revenue sources. What programs or services would residents be willing to see eliminated or cut in order to balance the budget? So the genesis of the question came from that as a context, and you can see that under eliminate the recreation programs, that received a 38% rating on strongly, being strongly opposed. Cutting back or closing the swim center was strongly opposed at 47%. Reduced maintenance in parks was strongly opposed, and pretty much, you can go down the column there, and you can see that there was very little support at all for any of the elimination of programs or services, with the possible exception of reducing library hours, which received 20% somewhat support and a 24% neither support or oppose. And then again, on the city support for various cultural and community programs, also received a 20% support rating. The next question we asked was strategies to generate economic growth and prosperity for the community and its residents. This was aimed at trying to flush out some economic development ideas to see if residents would support the city taking a more aggressive role in economic development opportunities. First question was, should the city take an active role helping outside companies relocate to Palm Springs in order to increase economic opportunities? Again, it received a 45% strongly-agree rating. The city, should the city provide tax incentives and/or other financial assistance to business catering, or creating, excuse me, creating new jobs? Again, received a 42% strongly-agree. The city should provide financial support to businesses in targeted areas such as the Central Business District. Their support fell off somewhat, and 32% somewhat agreed with that versus the 21% who strongly agreed with that. Should the city provide assistance with road, sewer, utility costs to new and expanding businesses? Here, support again somewhat fell off with only 38% somewhat agreeing with that, where 20% actually disagreed with this position. And then finally, should the city provide sufficient assistance in the area of economic development? Or does the city currently provide sufficient assistance? 39% of those who responded didn't feel they were, I guess, qualified enough to either agree or disagree with making an opinion on this, so they basically said that they didn't know, whereas 21% said they did agree that the city was providing sufficient assistance. What do you believe the city's priorities should be over the next two years? You can see economic concerns was the highest category at 48%. Police and public safety was next at 24%, and then it gradually goes down from there to the other category, which it's pretty much a mixed bag there. This was an open-ended question that the city asked, and respondents gave us a wide range of answers, but they were grouped into these individual categories with economic concerns, mainly issues like the Desert Fashion Plaza, the downtown area being the biggest issue that was raised in this response. And then there were some other concerns, and the scale pretty much drops off from there. So that is the actual survey. The other part of this was the normative comparisons that were done. The city decided to have its results compared to other jurisdictions of either a similar size or demographic or community characteristic to see how we compared to that jurisdiction. The National Research Center, which conducts the survey, has over 300 jurisdictions in their database, and so they were able to take our results and compare them. And so we'll go through this real quick, but on the quality of life rating, and this is on the West Coast, using those cities in the Western database that they have, you can see that Palm Springs as a place to live ranked seventh out of 30 jurisdictions that they compared us against. So we are above the norm, and you can see the comparisons there. Interesting to note that throughout this entire section, the city was either above the norm, similar to the norm, and most instances with very, with only one or two instances where the city actually felt below the norm, so I think we are rated very high. But you can go down there and see, like, Palm Springs as a place to retire, out of 18 jurisdictions for comparison, we rated number one. If you go to the national rating, again, Palm Springs as a place to retire with 39 jurisdictions used in the comparison, again, rated number one. As a place to live, we rated 19 out of 123 different jurisdictions. As a place to live, we rated nineteen out of a hundred and twenty-three different jurisdictions. On Table Two B, which is the community characteristics, page twenty-seven of your council packet, you can see in a sense of community, the city rated number one. Openness and acceptance, we were rated number one. On air quality, we're rated number three, and you remember, that was one of our strengths, and out of ten jurisdictions, we rated number three on that. And then nationally, openness and acceptance, which was one of our strengths, again, we rated number one out of twenty-three jurisdictions that they compared us against. On the issue of public trust, in the Western database, as a value for the taxes paid by residents, the city was rated number two in the rankings, with seventeen jurisdictions being compared, that we were compared against, with a comparison rating of above the norm. So, I think, again, the city is being rated very high with respect to some of its residents' opinions on certain things like taxes and, and quality of life issues. On, we can skip the fourteen C. And on impressions of city employees, we were basically similar to the norm in all categories, both in the Western and national databases. On the quality of public safety services, again, we were similar to the norm with the one exception that in fire services, and you'll remember, fire service is rated very high in the survey, out of a hundred and fifty-five jurisdictions that we were compared against in the national survey, we received a ranking of twenty-nine. So, above the norm was the rating there. One area that we fell below the norm, and again, it's hard to know exactly what residents' opinions were on this, because without additional follow-up questions, you can't really decipher what they meant, but on street lighting, in the West, we were ranked below the norm. On thirty-six jurisdictions used in the comparison, we were ranked thirty-six. So, again, it's, it's really hard to understand whether that was just because residents felt that the lighting was either adequate, but the, or was inadequate, because that's the style of lighting we have, it's hard to know without doing some follow-up surveying. And again, that also shows in the national rating, where we, out of ninety-four jurisdictions, we were also ranked ninety-fourth on street lighting. So, it may be an issue we want to ask in a follow-up survey and try to get some more clarity as to what residents feel about the, the street lighting, and whether it's adequate or inadequate, or what their, what their sentiments are on that. On leisure services, basically similar to the norm or above the norm, with one exception, and that is recreation centers, facilities, in the West, out of twenty-nine jurisdictions used in the comparison, we fell below the norm and were ranked twenty-third out of twenty-nine. Planning services, the only one that we really fell below, well, in one category in the West, the only one we fell below in is our code enforcement. Out of forty-seven jurisdictions, we were ranked thirty-eighth, which is below the norm. And on the national survey, out of, on land use and planning and zoning, out of fifty-five jurisdictions, we were ranked forty-one, and on code enforcement, out of a hundred, we were ranked eighty-four. So, there are potential issues there that we need to examine and follow up on, and I think it's something that we'll definitely want to survey in future instruments to determine what is actually going on there, to see if there's ways we can improve the service levels we provide. Other public services, I think you can go through here, but the one that's somewhat interesting is, I guess, on the West database, the city fell below the norm. On services to youth, out of twenty-eight jurisdictions, we received a ranking of twenty-three. And with that, Mayor, and members of the City Council, that's basically the results of the National Citizen Survey. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions about the normative comparisons or any aspect of the survey, but with that, we stand ready to provide any guidance or assistance on the survey you may have.
Well, I don't know if I have a question, but I want to bring up something on page thirty-four, which is the quality of leisure services under normative comparisons. The fourth one down says recreational centers and facilities, we're twenty-third of twenty-nine, pretty low, below the norm. Okay? See that on page thirty-four? But on the bottom of the page, third from the bottom, it says, "The appearance of the recreational centers or facilities is number one out of six." So somehow, we have a nice appearance, but we don't have a good rating on our facilities, and I, it's just, you, you get only so many questions to ask, and you get little pieces of information. I'm just kind of curious as to, how do you get that below the norm on the facility, but you're number one in the appearance of the facility? So, I mean, I don't know if there's an answer, because there's enough questions here to give you a clear direction to-
It could be facilities, the other could be programs.
No, these are both facilities, because they have programs, they have accessibility to parks and rec programs and classes. Classes up here, this is the number, the fourth one down says recreational facilities, below the norm, and then down here, it says appearance of the facilities, and it says we're number one. So it's kind of a little bit conflicting. And do you have specific questions on programs or classes? What are the questions? I don't know what the questions are.
Without asking the National Research Center, it may be hard to discern from this table, but it may be a reflection of the don't-know responses. On the one question of recreation center facilities, thirty-seven percent of those who responded didn't indicate an answer, don't know. On the issue of appearance of recreation centers, facilities, only twenty-seven percent indicated a don't-know response. It's possible that that may have had some bearing-
Bearing, yeah.
-on the rating, and again, without asking them specifically that question, I'm not really ready to make a decision as to that, but it looks like there is about a ten percent spread there, which could affect some of the, the rating, and if that is indeed the case, it could have thrown off the response.
Again, I don't think it's easy to answer, it's just an interesting observation, if you will, how on the same page, you got those kind of different views.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Troy, again, from a question standpoint, and I don't remember what the questions were, maybe you can address them, but I'm looking at eighteen, which is quality of planning services. You know, and if it's sent to a random mailing group, my, my guess would be, the, the number of don't-know would be pretty high. So if you, so you're looking at a number, in this case, forty-one, but-
Just a number of jurisdictions.
If I remember, they had, or did they have a question to say that you didn't use it, and if you say you don't use it, or you don't know, that, that, I mean, it's not really an accurate rating for, for, for services if you don't, if you don't use them. You're going by what you've heard, or you're going by, you know, which box looks good to check.
Or what you feel you would go to, or that you would like to attend. Yes.
Yeah, and it's-
I mean, because this, I mean, surveys are always a snapshot.
And so, you know, that, if you translate that back over to thirty-five, which is virtually the same thing, you know, it makes it, I mean, it, you know, I'd be interested to see what the, what the numbers were as to how many didn't, didn't really have a comment on it, because they didn't know, and run the percentage against that.
Well, it's a valid point, and on Figure Twenty-One, which is the quality of planning and code enforcement services, they specifically removed the don't-know responses. So we do not know what the percentage of don't-know responses were, they only use those responses that were given, and we assume that those people have some knowledge of the services that they're being asked to respond to. So, without the benefit of having that question, have you ever used, we have to assume that those who did respond have had some interaction with those services, but Lee is trying to look up what the don't-know response rate was for that specific question, and if we don't have an answer today, we'll certainly ask the National Research Center to find out how that may impact the overall results.
Well, I think one of the things that came out of the, out of the task force also was, again, planning, zoning, was that we, we survey people that use the facility, and that's something that we're, that was a suggestion out of the, out of the task force, and I'm, I hope we do, we do follow up on that, because that is a chance to really get an accurate number, and I don't think this really gives us an accurate number, this, but.
Okay. Other questions, comments, or observations?
How come it took so long to get this report?
It's next week, it's on the agenda, we can put it on there. Okay. Anything else on this, Council? You all right? Troy, thank you. Next, if not last, item before us is Item G Three, the future study session docket. There's a drafted list with the ability to add or subtract. Mr. Ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. What we would like you to do is help us guide an agenda for the next month or two. What we are suggesting next week, or the next study session, which is the twenty-fourth of September, the two items you see there, the signage on the taxi cabs and the convention center expansion update. We also believe we could get a general plan update, because that will be a relatively brief report. So those three items, we would suggest on the twenty-fourth. The meeting on, the first meeting in October is a council cabinet meeting, which takes us to our next available meeting of the twenty-second. And at that meeting, we would like to do the quarterly budget review, and the budget task force will be ready for their recommendations to council at that time as well. What you see below are topics to be scheduled, and the rank priority of those would be helpful. That's what we're looking for direction on. Thank you.
You got cabinet scheduled for October eighth, is that right? Okay, Council, what's your pleasure on this?
Well, I, I think that nine twenty-four is fine.
Me too. Me too. Looks fine.
Which would include the signage for the taxi cab, convention center, phase, phase two expansion, and general plan update. So basically, we just want to look at the eighth?
That's a cabinet meeting, so it would, go on November.
You have cabinet, right.
Yeah, we would be looking at, Trish, in, the meetings in November, unless we wanted to add to the last meeting in October.
That's fine.
The one caveat I would add on the tourism agreement, the advisory group in Linda Ford from tourism are almost complete with their work. We will reconvene the council subcommittee, probably, hopefully, within the next two weeks. Then they'll be ready to come to council as well. So, that will become a priority. Now, we may want to do a special meeting for that, that could be a possibility, because otherwise, we'll be well into November before we're able to have that presentation.
I noticed that you have the twenty-six down of November as a study session, and wanted to remind you that usually, the day before, the night before Thanksgiving-
We don't meet.
We don't meet.
Somebody's cooking.
We're all cooking.
And you got to realize, that's the day after the new council sworn in, and is it November twenty-fifth, swearing in a new council?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, so.
I really wasn't worried about cooking on the twenty-sixth, because I knew I would be.
Thinking of others, as always, Jeannie. That's amazing about you, never stop thinking of others.
Okay, that's a good point.
Once sworn in noon? Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Just a question, Mr. Ready, the design review ordinance, has that been reviewed at this body, or do we need to see the study session before the ordinance goes to planning commission, or how do you perceive that happening?
Actually, that's a good question, Councilman, on the, we were originally, had envisioned that that would be part of the overall and global changes and revisions from the budget task, from the planning task force, like the grading plan and things like that. That process is probably going to take a little longer, so it might be a good idea to separate the architectural review or design review and bring that before for a study session sooner rather than later. I understand from Mr. Evans, the planning commission basically has seen this proposal, they, they like it, and they would be supporting it, so it would just be a matter of agendizing it and bringing it before the council.
I would certainly like to get it on as soon as we could get it on. I mean, I, I hate to, I hate to, I hate to go even past the twenty-fourth. I mean, I think it's, I think it's something that it needs to be empowered.
If, if I could suggest, Councilman, on the, if, if it would be all right with the council, we could put that on the twenty-fourth and move the general plan update to the cabinet session, the cabinet meeting, since we'll have all the commission members there, and that would probably be good information for them as well.
General plan does affect all boards and commissions, so it might be more inclusive that way.
Okay, then we'll add a design review for the twenty-fourth.
And you'll do design review on that next two weeks then, is that right?
Correct, and general plan update on the cabinet session.
The issue of the, the downtown parking and the surveillance cameras, it says, how do you want to bring that forward? Is that to be brought forward, is that a study session? Or is it still coming forward on our legislative calendar with the ability to take action, or just to send back for a restudy? Because I don't want to, I don't want to drag that out either, otherwise, this isn't looking like you're in the middle of October before you get any kind of reaction from council on that, and the season's coming into place, and the demands for protection, I dare say, are rising, if not mounting. So, does it take much to show it here, or do you want to bring it back at a regular This is the parking surveillance cameras, parking structure? I mean, you can bring it back during legislative calendar and act on it there, or send it back for additional information, but if you don't put it on this docket, then I don't want to postpone this till the end of October, let alone November. Between the time of installation and ordering and so on and so forth, season will be upon you, and we've got problems now. Any idea of the time necessary in the presentation?
It would be a relatively short presentation. What we could do, Mr. Mayor, is, since we probably would need a special meeting for the tourism contract, we certainly could add that to the special meeting and have those two subjects on. If it's the council's pleasure.
The design review, how long is that going to take, do you think? Any idea how a design review would work on the twenty-fourth? Is it a long, lengthy presentation, is it just simply, here's what we're finding, and here's what we want to do?
I think, I think it's, it's a very short presentation, and probably some discussion of the finer points and the makeup of the group, but other than that.
Is the, is the surveillance camera long or lengthy or short, and succinct?
It would basically be presenting to council several scenarios and their costs, which would be relatively short.
And then direction back to either kill it or carry forward.
Yes.
Okay, on the, on the cabbie issue, Mr. Oden.
Yeah, if we could get along with that, report from the police department and other options as well.
Sure. You want to hire security?
Like an incident report?
Options as opposed to hard fixed cameras?
Yes, I mean, we may want to look at security.
A person.
Yes. And making sure that we have the, a police report with what crimes, vandalism, et cetera, has taken place, which would probably also include reports from the businesses there.
Hey, you may want to get the affected businesses, who apparently report that their employees won't park on the top deck because of this occurrence, and we're losing the top deck on that usage.
Okay.
I mean, get a comprehensive report. That's the prompt for all this, is basically from there.
Uh, Council, are you saying that you'd like to also have that on the twenty-fourth?
Well, it looks okay to me, yeah, if we can get that on there.
Okay, that'll be the four items then for the twenty-fourth.
Okay, and then a question on the cabs. We don't take action unilaterally, this is a comprehensive, value-wide effort, because the use of the sign is not, as though we decree it, now it can go on the cabbies, they have to go to other cities and jurisdictions, so when you bring this package forward, I'd like to find out exactly what it is they're asking, their justifications for it, and then the implications, and a timeline as to how to process this thing through a value-wide review. Sunline does not regulate this aspect of the cab industry, it's just not part of what we do regulate, so it has to be the jurisdictions themselves that have to accept the ability, otherwise, you know, cabs can't go in certain cities with, with these kind of things. And I think you've got to get, obviously, some sort of review- And I think you've got to get, obviously, some sort of review at some point in the process. I won't dictate when or where, but the airport commission should probably get a hand on what their concerns are, if any.
And then the only, the only final question then to council is, if you could give us some direction on the meeting for November the 12th?
November the 12th.
And one thing I would add to the topics to be scheduled that Mr. Augburn did mention, that would be the parking structure, special event use.
That's important.
The policy.
That's important.
It might just be a long meeting on some of these study sessions.
Mr. Mayor? A couple items, you know, I'm not suggesting a date by any means, but I think this should be under the topics, and they're, they're, they're moving along, but I'd sure like to see a little more on before they move any further, and that is, the item was just on a planning commission study session last week regarding secondary residences, secondary units in the single family.
Granny flats.
Granny flats, essentially, and that's become a state issue. And that is very interesting to me, and I like to attack it sooner than later. Not attack, wrong word, address, pardon me. I just, my D's and my T's mixed up. And, and another thing we talked about was, and I noticed, carport code violations, it was really more than carports, it was, it was encroachments into setbacks, existing encroachments that were prior, that are existing, and how we're going to deal with those in the future, or can we deal with those in the future, and try to avoid the variance process that we've struggled with over the years.
If I can make a suggestion on that one, that you just talked about, I think December 3rd would be great.
And the basis of this finding would be?
It's an open date.
We haven't dinner that night, kid. All right, have you got enough action at this time, Mr. Reddy? You got more dates you want to look at, sir?
I'm going to have to. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
I think, on some of these, to try to put more than three items on, you know, some of this stuff is, yeah, so we're probably going to have to look at additional dates.
Okay. I'll bring those...
Or we can look at change in the time of the meeting, try to get it earlier, not run so late, start earlier and get more work done that way.
I think that's a great idea. You can do that.
Yeah, but we're going to change the times for council's study session.
Why not?
Yeah, change the time for study sessions. Could do a long run afternoon, could do the lunch, and then run through to 5:00. As opposed to, you know, the later hours. We had talked about that earlier.
Go to a closed session.
Knock them out?
Maybe that can be talked about in future study session, adjustment of times for the meetings. How's that?
That's different.
That's a five-minute discussion, bring out the old charts and the old options, and we'll be done with that in 10 minutes, whether we're going to do it or not. All right, put that on the next one. Put that on for 24, we'll just get on that, that'll take, I mean, that's just, you're going to do it, or you're not going to do it. We can't talk about it tonight, as the clerk indicates, it's not agenda, so we can't discuss changing, but it would take a few minutes to discuss whether you want to do it or not do it, and whether it's a late afternoon or early afternoon. And give some direction back to council's staff for more detailed explanation on time changes.
What if we... Would we have to do that if we just forego the closed session and went into open session at that time?
You can postpone the closed session and convene at 5:30?
Mm-hmm.
You could do it once, versus addressing the idea of changing the times more permanently. No, you can't.
Okay.
I defer to clerk, how's that?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Do you want to put meeting time adjustments or modifications on the 24th?
Yes, we'll do that.
We'd probably be better off just to do that than meeting.
Can't call a special study session, can you?
Yeah, you can call a special study session. We have a special study session tomorrow. So one has been called. I guess you can.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you, Mayor.
You got directions, sir? Very good. Council, anything else? Well, I hope to see some of you tomorrow morning, 6:30 out at City Hall's flagpole for the 9/11 commemorative service. It is now 8:55, seeing no further business before the council. Have announced that? No, no, we'll stand adjourned then. Thank you and good night.